Okay, so we'll start going through the study guide and get through as much of it as we can in the next hour or so. And then next week, we'll use the review session to study for lab, so that you guys know exactly what to expect on the lab practical, what models will be on there, et cetera. So just starting to go through the study guide. First, know the functions of the kidney, including specifics regarding homeostatic regulation of the blood. So in general, what do the kidneys do? What are the three general functions are? Homeostatic regulation. Good. Good. So the three general functions of the, well, the kidney, not just the kidney really, the whole urinary system. Excretion. We talked about excretion when we did digestive, right? And we said that excretion is when we get rid of waste or remove wastes from our, you know, body fluids. So removal of waste products. So specifically, when we look at the kidneys, remember that the kidneys can take waste products and put them into the urine, right? So we remove them from the bloodstream, for example, and put them into the urine. So wastes like nitrogenous wastes are excreted into the urine. Elimination. Right? What's elimination describing? Like, what's the general term for this process of elimination that happens in the urinary system? Urination, right? Like, the elimination is literally like eliminating from the body. So with the digestive system, that's defecation. With the urinary system, it's urination. So elimination is, which is micturition, right? That's the like technical term. Eliminates or removes wastes from the body. So first, excretion occurs, right? We have to take the waste products from the bloodstream and put them into the urine. Then elimination occurs, where we actually take the waste products and get them out of our body completely. Homeostatic regulation is a big one, right? The kidneys are involved in all sorts, all sorts of different homeostatic regulation, you know, mechanisms of homeostatic regulation of the blood. On the study guide, for example, it says, for example, how does it stabilize blood pH? So homeostatic regulation, which remember homeostasis is just balance, right? So this is like, how do the kidneys maintain balance in the body? One way is, again, they regulate pH of the blood. There are a couple of different body systems that regulate the pH of our bloodstream. Remember, when we talked about the respiratory system, we talked about this, right? How the amount of carbon dioxide that we have relates to the pH of the bloodstream? So we can breathe more or breathe less to alter pH. While the kidneys are also important in regulating the pH of the bloodstream. How is that? Do you guys remember what the kidneys can do? In general, what do the kidneys do? What are they doing just in general? Filtering the blood, right? And they're taking extra stuff out of the blood and putting it into what? The urine, so we can get rid of it. So when we talk about pH, we're talking about acidity. And the two ions that are present in our bloodstream that have to do with pH are hydrogen ions and bicarb ions. So hydrogen and bicarbonate. So keeping that in mind, what do you think the kidneys could do to help regulate pH? Perfect, right? Control how much of those things we actually put in the urine. So if the blood is too acidic, we could put more what in the urine? Perfect, more hydrogen ions into the urine. Or we could put less bicarbonate into the urine, right? So they regulate the pH of blood by controlling the loss of hydrogen and bicarb in the urine. The kidneys also regulate the concentration of ions in the blood in the exact same way, right? The kidneys can control how much of each of the ions we lose in the urine. So if we have too much sodium, we can lose sodium in the urine. If we have too much calcium, we can lose calcium in the urine, right? Whenever we have too much of an ion, we lose it in the urine. Whenever we don't have enough, we don't lose it in the urine. There's another way. So it's not just controlling how much of each ion we put into the urine. There's also another way that the kidneys can impact ion concentrations, specifically for calcium. Can you think of how the kidneys might impact calcium concentrations besides just putting it in the urine or not? Perfect, perfect. So regulate ion concentrations in blood by controlling loss in the urine and by making calcitrials, which remember, when we don't have enough calcium, the kidneys release calcitrials. Well, parathymochromon comes first, and then we release calcitrial, and that goes and works in the intestines. So so far, the kidneys allow us to regulate the pH of the bloodstream. They allow us to regulate the concentration of ions in the bloodstream. What about volume, right? How do the kidneys impact blood volume? What's up? Yeah, increase or decrease, really, right? They have a direct effect on blood volume because urine is coming from the blood, right? The kidneys filter the blood and the stuff, you know, they they take out, they change a little bit, and then that's urine, and now leaves the body. So if the kidneys filter more water out of the blood and make more urine, blood volume goes down, right? If they make less urine, blood volume goes up. So the kidneys have a direct impact on blood volume. So they regulate blood volume and what does blood volume impact? Perfect, blood pressure. So regulate blood volume and blood pressure. Now, the kidneys have a direct effect on blood pressure because of blood volume, right? If they stop filtering as much water, we have more blood volume, blood pressure is higher. But what else do they do? They also make something that impacts blood pressure. Perfect. So they release renin and erythropoietin. We'll talk more about renin later because that's a really like whole big huge complex thing. But in general, remember that renin is an enzyme. And ultimately, renin leads to the activation of what? Perfect, angiotensin 2. So renin is an enzyme that leads to angiotensin 2, which increases blood pressure, right? In a ton of different ways. The kidneys also, you said, release erythropoietin. What does erythropoietin do? Good. Erythropoietin stimulates red blood cell production. And how would that affect blood volume and blood pressure? It would increase it, right? Don't forget, think back, like, all of this relates to each other, right? All these different systems relate to each other. And we talked about the blood at the very, very beginning of the semester. We said that half of blood volume is red blood cells, right? Approximately, a little less than half of blood volume is red blood cells. So if we make more red blood cells, that's going to increase the volume of blood that we have, right? And the amount of oxygen that we're able to deliver to our tissues. Okay, so good, regulate the pH of blood, regulate the concentration of ions in the blood, produce calcitrial, which also affects calcium concentration specifically, regulate blood volume and pH by controlling how much urine we produce and by releasing renin and erythropoietin, which would both increase blood volume and blood pressure. The kidneys also control the excretion of nitrogenous wastes into the urine. And that's an important homeostatic thing as well, right? Like, we don't want these wastes to build up in the bloodstream. So getting rid of them, taking them out of the bloodstream is an important thing for maintaining homeostasis. Did we talk about all of them? Is there anything I missed? I don't think we missed anything. What major wastes does the kidney filter? Know the wastes, the blood tests we use to measure their level and the condition that results when they are high. Okay. So we've said this, we've talked about how the kidneys eliminate wastes a couple of times, right? If I just erase the symptoms, I want to keep them. The kidneys are important for cleaning wastes out of the body, right? Remember, the kidneys and the liver are like the two major ways that we get rid of or we clean out the bloodstream, right? Like, when you talk about drugs, when you talk about giving medications to people, and we look at how fast is the person going to clear the drug from their body? We look at what's happening in the liver, what's happening in the kidneys. Those are the two things that clear most, you know, wastes or toxins or chemicals from the bloodstream. When we look at what the kidneys are doing, the kidneys are clearing or excreting a very specific type of waste from the bloodstream. And that is nitrogenous wastes. What does nitrogenous mean? Nitrogen, yeah, I'm honored to ask a question. Nitrogenous, nitrogen containing. These wastes happen to have a lot of nitrogen in them. Like, when you look at the actual chemical structure, there's a lot of nitrogen in it. So these are nitrogenous wastes. The major nitrogenous wastes that the kidneys remove are creatinine. Good. Good. And these just come from metabolism. Being like, there's constantly metabolism that's happening in your body. Your muscles, your cells, they're constantly processing things. And as they, metabolism is just chemical reactions. So there's chemical reactions happening everywhere in your cells all the time. And when your cells are performing these chemical reactions, they make waste products. And those waste products get excreted from the cells, out into the bloodstream, and we got to get rid of them somehow. The kidneys are, would do that. For example, like creatinine comes from the muscles. The muscles metabolize creatine, right? Remember, we had to, when you talk about creatine phosphate is how the muscles store energy. Well, when they go to use that energy, they produce creatinine, this waste. It's one of the wastes that the kidneys get rid of. Okay, so these are all nitrogenous wastes that build up because of metabolism in our cells. And the kidneys are responsible for getting rid of them. When we are checking the function of the kidneys clinically, if you have a patient who comes in and you want to see how well their kidneys are functioning, there's a couple of different things you could do. One, you can check the serum creatinine level. If the serum creatinine level is high, I didn't talk about this in class, I don't think. If the serum creatinine is high, what do you think that means about the kidneys? Just think through it. The kidneys are responsible for getting rid of creatinine. So there might be some problem with the kidneys, right? If serum creatinine is high, then the kidneys aren't working like they're supposed to. We calculate creatinine clearance, like, that's how we calculate GFR. We, you know, we talk about GFR, right? Glomerular filtration, right? And it's like, how in the world would you calculate this? It's millions of nephrons. How do you calculate what millions of nephrons are doing at the same time? Well, there's a specific calculation that we do that uses the age, whether they're male or female, how much they weigh, and it also uses the serum creatinine. The blood test that we talked about in class, does anybody remember what blood test we talked about that measures nitrogenous wastes? Good. The BUN, right? BUN, it's blood, urea, nitrogen. Another measure of kidney function. If the kidneys aren't functioning well, the BUN will be high. What do we call that? And azotemia is a high blood urea nitrogen. So if I told you, you had a patient who was suffering from renal failure and you noted or in the chart, you noticed that it says they had azotemia, what does that mean? See, that means they have a high blood urea nitrogen. The next kind of tab on the review is a really big thing, and it's kind of like, it's kind of general. It's like understanding the whole chapters and showing. Know the anatomy of the kidney, so the structures, their locations, and their general functions. For example, renal pyramids are conical structures in the renal medulla. They hold the collecting ducts that collect urine from nephrons and channel it down towards the renal papilla and minor pelix. So again, I said, note, you have to understand the overall function of the structures. This should be gleaned from the lecture as a whole. Don't just copy a couple of words from one slide. The reason I say that is because if you notice, this chapter is kind of weird in the way that it flows. And we'll talk about something, and we'll kind of go through it, and then a little bit later, we'll talk about the same strip, the same topic again, but in more detail. And then a little bit later, we talk about the same, so it's kind of, it's just not organized as well as a lot of chapters are. So that's why I say, make sure you're you're taking this information from the whole overall chapter. Don't just look at one slide and say, you know, assume that you know everything about that structure because of the two words that's on one slide. Okay? We'll just talk really generally right now about the anatomy of the kidney and what everything does. Let me change my first over second. Okay. So this is my kidney. Lots of kidney. This is my kidney. Remember that the kidney is separated into like two large kind of functional regions, right? The outside, what's this outside region of the kidney? Good. That's the renal cortex. So this whole outer area out here is the renal cortex. What is located in the renal cortex? Which structures are out there? Okay, the glomerular corpuscles, okay, yes, what else? What is that a part of? The glomerular corpuscle is part of a bigger structure. What's up? Okay, the glomerulus is in the corpuscle, but what's that part of? You've got the glomerulus and then, or the corpuscle, and then you've got the tubule. What's that whole thing called? Nephron, thank you. That's the nephron. So the renal cortex, right? All of this area out here, that's where the majority of the nephrons are located. The nephrons are really like the functional parts, right? Like, the functional units of the kidney. They're the things that are actually filtering the blood and producing urine. Everything after that is just collection, that's it. After the nephron, in the very beginning of the collecting duct, everything else from here until we, you know, from here all the way down until we leave the kidney, it's just moving the urine. So the cortex is really, really important because that's where all these nephrons are housed. So if you were to tell me the function of the renal cortex, what would you say? Perfect, perfect. The renal cortex contains nephrons. The function of those is to filter the blood to produce urine. So that's where the blood is filtered and where we actually produce urine. All of that work is happening out in the renal cortex. When we move in from the renal cortex, the next structure or the next region is called what? The renal, there are pyramids there, but what's the whole area? Good, the renal medulla. So then in, we have the renal medulla. The renal medulla exactly has pyramids. So the renal pyramids are these little pyramid shaped, they're kind of like cone shaped structures. Their base, like the wide part, goes along the edge of the cortex. And then their apex, the tip goes pointing towards the center of the kidney. So these are renal pyramids. What is inside the renal pyramid? So we said, like, in the cortex, we have a bunch of nephrons. What do we have traveling through the renal pyramids? Let me just study, this is the first time it's happened. I guess we're still like a ways away from the exam. Okay. So it's a bad drawing, but traveling through the renal pyramids, we have all of the collecting ducts. Okay, so the renal pyramids have collecting ducts. They're literally just tubes that collect urine from the nephrons. Oops, I said collecting tubes, because I said tube. Collecting ducts. And at the very, so like, the collecting ducts are coming throughout the whole, like, the whole renal pyramid, right? There's a ton of collecting ducts. And each collecting duct is collecting urine from, you know, tons and tons of nephrons. And the collecting ducts all come together and merge at the apex or the tip of this renal pyramid, and they become a papillary duct. Okay, so each renal pyramid has collecting ducts and one papillary duct. The, or a papillary, normally fewer papillary ducts. Remember, when we look at this renal pyramid, or you guys tell me, what's the very tip of the renal pyramid called? That's in the bladder, that's the the triangle in the bladder. Exactly, yeah, the papula. That's why we call it a papillary duct. So the collecting ducts are collecting urine from the nephrons, and then they come down and they merge into one papillary duct. The papillary duct empties the urine through the papilla, renal papilla, right? Papilla papillary. So the whole really point of the renal pyramids, the function, is to collect urine and transport the urine towards a structure called the minor pelix. Speaking of, the next structures that we have here are these little cups or these little funnels that are called minor calyces. One is a minor calyx. If we're talking plural, it's calyces. So we have minor calyces in the kidney, and we have major calyces. It's just talking about like their size. So at the tip of every renal pyramid, we have a minor calyx. Again, it's just like a little funnel or a little cup that collects urine from a renal pyramid. Okay, so let's name that minor calyx. Collects urine from a pyramid and funnels the urine towards a major calyx. A major calyx is just where two or more minor calyces come together. Remember, the whole point to all of this is to try and get the urine from the millions of nephrons that are out here in the cortex and to take that urine away from the kidney. So the whole, like, the whole rest of the system, after we leave the the nephron in the cortex, after we leave the nephron, the rest of it is, again, it's literally just moving the urine, collecting it into a bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger area so that we can leave the this ureter. So the major calyx would be, for example, like, right here. This this structure, like, right this area, that's a major calyx. Or over here, we would have a minor, a minor, a minor. And then where they come together, like, right here, this area is another major calyx. And there would end up being another one over here, right? So that makes sense, right? Major calyx. Major calyx. And the function of the major calyx is to funnel blood, or sorry, to funnel urine towards the renal pelvis. The last part of this, this like urine transport system in the kidney is the renal pelvis. The renal pelvis is this funnel right here. So like the very end of all of this transportation is this last funnel is the renal pelvis. And the renal pelvis funnels the urine into the ureter. And so we'll have a kidney on that side of the body, there would be a kidney over here with the same thing happening, right? Leaves via the ureter. And what about these ureters? Where are they carrying the urine down to? The bladder, perfect. They go in at the back edge of the bladder. So the ureters literally like they're attached to the posterior abdominal wall, the inside of it, they travel down the back, kind of curve into the pelvis and go into the back of the bladder, right here. Okay. I think that's good. That's everything about the blood vessels. Any questions about any of that? No? Okay. The next thing is describe the blood flow through the kidney. This is kind of a lab thing, guys. But if you, if you understand it in lab, you would understand it on an exam. But blood flow through the kidneys, so I'm just, I'm not gonna actually like write it, I'm just gonna talk about it. Blood flows in to the kidney here at the hilum, right? Just like opening where everything comes in and out. Blood goes in via the renal artery. Then we have the renal artery branches, right? Like it comes in and it branches into a few segmental arteries. Like they go to the different segments of the kidney. So like the renal artery comes in, then we have a few segmental arteries. Then those branch, and we have an artery that goes up in between each of the renal pyramids. I forgot to name that structure. What's this area between the renal pyramids called? The renal, good, column. That's the renal column. The function of the renal column, I'm so glad we brought this up. The function of the renal column is to allow blood vessels to get to and from the cortex. So the tissue in these renal columns, like this tissue right here, is actually, the tissue is just really similar to the tissue that's in the cortex. That's why we say made of cortical tissue. The tissue is like in the cortex, it's just that it's not, it's not like jammed full of nephrons like the cortex is. And the blood vessels can't travel through the renal pyramids, right? The renal pyramids are full of all these collecting ducts, so the blood vessels can't go through them, but the blood vessels have to get out here to the cortex. Why do the blood vessels have to get out to the cortex? What's so important about the cortex? Right, that's where the blood's actually gonna be filtered, right? So like the blood has to get out here to the cortex, that's where the nephrons are or the glomerulus, where we filter it. So the blood vessels will travel through these renal columns to get out to the cortex. So we said we have a renal artery going in, and then the segmental artery, those go to the different segments of the kidney, then those branch, and we have these arteries that go between the pyramids. Those are interlobar arteries. Yeah, lobar. There are smaller little arteries out here that are called interlobular. You think of lobe and lobule. A lobe is bigger than a lobule, right? A lobule is smaller. So the vessels, the interlobar is bigger than the interlobular. Interlobular are also called cortical radiate. So, oh, God, thank you so much. We have fun video. So these ones that are going between the pyramids are interlobar arteries. Then the arteries will go off to either side and they'll arc around the, like the base of the pyramids or arc, because remember that the cortex is like curved, right? The kidney is this curve like this. So the vessels will come and they'll curve around or arc around the pyramid. Those are called arcuate arteries. They arcuate, they arc. Then we have these tiny little arteries that come off of the arcuate artery, and they branch out like this through the cortex. So these itty bitty little guys that go out into the cortex. Those are the interlobular arteries. Or again, you could also call them cortical radiate arteries. They radiate through the cortex, right? Cortical radiate arteries. Now, it is important to understand how the blood actually goes into the glomerulus, and then what happens when it leaves the glomerulus. The veins that are gonna end up leaving the kidney follow this exact path out. Except for in your lab manual, I don't know, I don't think this edition changed, it doesn't name segmental veins, for some reason they exist, but the lab manual doesn't name them. But the others match, right? It's like cortical radiate veins, arcuate veins, interlobar veins, segmental veins, then renal vein. But there's vessels in between, right? Like there's vessels leading into the nephron, there's a system of vessels that surround the nephron tubule, so there are other vessels, and it is important to understand those. So I am going to make space and we'll actually talk about those vessels. All right, so let's just make our nephron. Okay. So this right here is my nephron. That's a good nephron. Proud of that one. This is my nephron. Inside my renal corpuscle, the renal corpuscle is like the whole head, and then we have the nephron tubule. If we cut open that renal corpuscle, we can see a couple different structures. We can see the actual capillaries inside with the little podocytes on top, and then we can see the capsule wall. So if we look in here, inside this, we'll see there's an artery that leads in, and then it's connected to all of these interconnected, or it leads into all these interconnected capillaries. So there's all sorts of capillaries that are flowing through here. Like fifty intertwined capillaries flowing all around. That's the glomerulus. They have that ball of capillaries is the glomerulus. That's where the blood is ultimately gonna get, right? So that we can filter stuff out of the blood and into the capsular space. Now, we know that the blood flows into the kidney and it comes all the way out here to these cortical radiate arteries. How does it get into the glomerulus though, right? It doesn't go directly from the cortical radiate artery into the glomerulus. There's this vessel that leads in, right? What's the name of that arterial that leads into the glomerular capillaries? Right, that is the afferent with an A. Afferent glomerular, I shouldn't draw all of this actually, because we're gonna need to talk about it anymore. That is the afferent glomerular arterial. Okay, so that brings the blood into the glomerulus. Blood flows through the glomerulus, and then it leaves via another arterial. What's that arterial called? Efferent glomerular arterial. We use those terms, afferent and efferent, a lot, right? We use them in the nervous system when we talk about fibers bringing sensory signals in or motor signals out. And I always remember A comes before E, or we use it in lymphatic too, right? In the lymph nodes, A comes before E. So afferent goes in, efferent comes out. Then, when the blood leaves the glomerulus, it does not go directly into the cortical radiate veins, and then, you know, interlobar veins, segmental veins, renal veins. There are vessels that the blood's gonna go through before it goes into those cortical radiate veins. And those vessels are very, very important when we talk about the function of the kidney. So from this efferent arterial, the blood is gonna end up flowing through these blood vessels that wrap all around the nephron tubule. So if you remember like in lab, when you look at the kidneys, there are little blood vessels that are completely surrounding this nephron tubule, right? Why do you think that would be important? Why do we, then they're called peritubular capillaries? Why would we need capillaries wrapping all around the tubule? What's happening in the tubule? Filtration happens here. So we filter out of the blood into this capsular space. Then we've got all this fluid with stuff in it, right? Solutes. That fluid, we call it filtrate, and then tubular fluid. The tubular fluid's flowing through the tubule, and we're doing stuff to it, right? We're perfecting it. When we filter stuff out of the blood in the glomerulus, it's, we filter things like nonsensically, it's just based on size. If anything is small enough to get pushed out of the blood, it gets pushed out of the blood. Some of that stuff is good. Some of it's nutrients that we wanna keep. So we need, and it's way too much, like we push way too much fluid out. So as the fluid flows through the tubule, the whole point of the tubule is to perfect the urine, to make sure it's only waste products that we're getting rid of. We don't wanna get rid of nutrients. Nutrients are good, like glucose, for example. Glucose is good, it's helpful, we need it. So we don't wanna get rid of it in the urine, but it's small. So it gets pushed out of these fenestrated capillaries. A lot of ions get reabsorbed. Most of the water gets reabsorbed. The vast majority of things that get pushed out of the bloodstream in the glomerulus are going to get reabsorbed back. So we filter way more fluid than we actually pee out. Average glomerular filtration is like 120 mls a minute. We don't make that much urine, right? 120 mls a minute, we would be peeing constantly, right? Like 10 minutes and your bladder's bursting. So most of the stuff that we actually filter out is gonna get reabsorbed back into the body. And remember, there are bad things that we secrete, right? Like waste products, or sometimes if we have too much of an ion, we're gonna pump it into the tubule. So the point of the tubule is to protect, perfect the fluid and make sure that it's only actual things we wanna get rid of in the fluid by the time we put it into the collecting duct. So with that in mind, if there are things that are floating through this tubule, right? Like say a bunch of glucose is in this tubule, and we wanna reabsorb it back into our body, think about that. We can reabsorb it from the tubule into this interstitial fluid, but the point is not to put all of this stuff in interstitial fluid. The point is to put all this stuff in the blood. So we need. So when you're talking about, about filtration, yes, these capillaries aren't as permeable, but glucose is okay though. Glucose is fine, like capillaries, glucose is fine. So like think of your normal systemic capillaries, glucose can leave them. So. So it gets reabsorbed back into the bloodstream. So those are peritubular capillaries. There are also vessels that we call the vasorecta. Those are just really long, straight little vessels here that go down around the long loop of head lobe that we have on the nephrons. Then we end up flowing back out through the venous system. There are some little venules that will collect blood and then, but don't worry about that. Okay, so the afferent arterial, the glomerulus, the efferent arterial, the peritubular capillaries, the vasorecta, then back out. And again, the function here is important. It's important to understand that the reason we have peritubular capillaries is for reabsorption back into the blood. And secretion, and so reabsorption into the blood and secretion into the urine. Does that make sense? Good? I know this chapter's kind of, it's a complex chapter, it's got a lot of stuff going on. Okay, so that's blood flow through the kidney and then a little more. Okay, so next thing. Know, or describe the structure and function of the glomerulus. So structure, the membranes or cells that make up the glomerular membrane, the types of capillaries, specifics about the attached vessels, et cetera. So we kind of started to talk about this a little bit. I'm like paranoid about this. Okay, so the glomerulus, right, again, is this, this intertwined ball of capillaries that's present here in the renal corpuscle, like the big like rounded head part of the nephron. We already said that there are two vessels that are attached, and you guys already told me their names, right? The afferent arterial brings blood in, and the efferent arterial brings blood out. Those vessels are not equal to each other, hey? They're different in size, and they are intentionally different in size. Off the top of your head, you guys know what I'm hinting, what I'm getting to there? Like what the? Good, so which one's smaller? Perfect, good guys, all right. So the efferent arterial that leads out of the glomerulus is smaller than the afferent arterial. So if you just think about that in general, a bigger vessel means more blood flows through it, easy. So we bring a bunch of blood into the glomerulus, and then we make it really hard to leave, okay? Because the vessel's smaller, the efferent is smaller. So a bunch of blood goes in, it makes it harder to leave, so there's this back pressure, and that increases the blood pressure in the glomerular capillaries. So the pressure in the glomerular capillaries is quite a bit higher than the blood pressure in our systemic capillaries because of the arrangement of those vessels. And that's important because we need that pressure in order to drive glomerular filtration, right? To make sure that we end up pushing enough stuff from the blood into the capsular space. The glomerular capillaries themselves are, just mentioned earlier, fenestrated capillaries. Remember that fenestrated capillaries have pores, so they're more permeable than our normal systemic So they're more permeable than our normal systemic capillaries. They easily, let's talk about what, what can get pushed out of the glomerulus and into the capsular space. Water, of course, so a lot of fluid gets pushed out. Ions, right? Ions are small, they can be filtered out of the blood. Glucose, amino acids, fatty acids. All of this stuff, if you think about, kind of like, think about the GI tract. Remember we have fenestrated capillaries in the, in the intestines? So if you think about all this stuff that we can easily absorb from the intestines, well, that's all stuff that we can easily filter out of the kidney. Things that do not leave the blood. Okay, can you tell me the two like major things we're worried about that stay in the glomerulus and should not be pushed out? Plasma proteins and what else? Red blood cells. Plasma proteins and red blood cells do not get filtered out of the glomerulus. So should you ever see either of those in the urine? No. Right? Remember, this is like the very beginning of the production of urine. We filter stuff out of the blood and into this capsule. It flows through the tubule, right? We put some, a little bit of stuff in, some waste products and ions. We take some stuff back out and put it back in the bloodstream and then it ends up going through the collecting ducts, right? Through the palaces, the pelvis, the ureter, the bladder, the urethra, and then that's urine. So the red blood cells are too big to be pushed out here. So they should not ever be in the urine. Plasma proteins are too big to be pushed out here. So they should not be in the urine. If they are, that means one of two things. There's way too much pressure. Right? Think about like a filter, a water filter. A water filter traps some stuff, it allows other stuff through. There's little holes in it. If you blast the water through at super, super high pressure, you can break the filter. The same thing with our glomerulus. If our blood pressure is super, super high, we can force big stuff through and break the filter, right? Damage the kidneys. That's why high blood pressure is associated with kidney failure, kidney disease. And in that case, when the blood pressure's really, really high, we can see plasma proteins in the urine. That's why they check for proteins in the urine when you're pregnant and that's an early sign of preclampsia. Red blood cells, if red blood cells are in the urine, that's typically because there's some sort of damage along the way. So like if you have a cut somewhere or something and blood gets into the urine. Okay, so arrangement of the vessels leading in and out, types of capillaries, what gets filtered out, what doesn't? Oh, okay, so the filtration membrane. The filtration membrane is just like the cells that the stuff, the filter, right? That's the way to think. The filtration membrane is just the filter that the blood's being pushed across. The filter is made up of two types of cells that are like held together with acellular material. The two types of cells are, one, the endothelial cells, right? Because remember, these are capillaries and we know that capillaries are lined with endothelial cells. So in order to be filtered out, all of these things have to cross a membrane. And that filtration membrane is made up of the endothelial cells. And then there's acellular material. I just kind of think of it as like the glue holding the other two cells together. And then remember that the glomerulus is covered with a membrane. There's like, if you look at this, remember our body cavities, how they have two layered membranes? Like the pleura. There's the visceral pleura on the lungs and then the parietal pleura on the outside, like lining the cavity. There's a double layered membrane here inside the glomerulus as well. There's a parietal layer that lines the inside of the capsule. And there's a visceral layer that lines the surface of the capillaries. That visceral layer that lines the surface of the capillaries is made up of cells called podocytes. So if things are gonna get pushed out of the bloodstream, they have to make it through the wall of the capillary, but they also have to make it through this membrane. They have to make it through the layer of podocytes. So it's gotta be small enough to go through the pores in the capillary and the little gaps between the podocytes, which I'll talk about those, those slits in a second. So the filtration membrane is made up of the endothelial cells and podocytes. So in lab, you guys saw podocytes, but podocytes form this membrane and they, they wrap around all of these glomerular capillaries. And the cells have all of these little processes. They look like little feet. That's where the term podocyte comes from. But they have these little processes and say like if my finger was the capillary, the little processes will wrap around like this. They don't completely cover the capillary. They leave little gaps or little slits between them. And each of these little slits or these little gaps, those are, they're literally called filtration slits. So things that get pushed out of the bloodstream go through the pores that are present, right? Between the endothelial cells of the fenestrated capillaries and between, and the filtration slits between the podocytes. And again, anything that's small enough to make it through these little holes will get pushed out of the bloodstream. Know the three layers of the filtration membrane. We just talked about that, right? The three layers of the filtration membrane are the endothelial cells and then the dense layer is just acellular material and then the podocytes. What things pass through, what things remain in the blood? We just talked about that as well. Describe the flow of fluid through the kidney and then the rest of the tract and out of the body. We've kind of done most of that. I'll stop, this will be the last thing that we talk about, so you guys have some time in lab. We've kind of done this already, but we'll just, we'll talk through it again. So first, blood goes in through the afferent arterial, goes into the glomerular capillaries and then leaves through the efferent arterial. Stuff that leaves or gets filtered out of the glomerulus goes into the capsular space, right? That's all of the space in the capsule. Then it's gonna go through the tubule. First, the proximal convoluted tubule, then the nephron loop, or it's also called the loop of Henley. It goes through this nephron loop. Then it goes through the distal convoluted tubule. The fluid then enters the collecting duct. And this is collecting urine from all different nephrons. And that's going to, remember that's in this renal pyramid. The collecting duct becomes the papillary duct as it leaves the renal papilla and empties into the minor calyx. Then the urine goes from the minor calyx into the major calyx, from the major calyx into the renal pelvis. We said the renal pelvis funnels the urine into the ureter, which brings the urine down to the bladder and then it leaves the bladder via the urethra. That's the whole process, essentially. We haven't really talked about reabsorption yet, but. Okay, we'll go ahead and stop there.